Good evening and welcome back to Channel 15. Tonight, we're live in the studio at 7th Pine Street again. And we continue our series of political discussions leading up to next week's Town Meeting Day elections. At this time, I'd like to make an announcement that next week at 6 o'clock, I will be joined here by John Faginett and Harold Eaton for live election results. We will go on at 6 o'clock and continue until we have all the information. Tonight, it's Rutland Town's turn. There's an election for selectmen. Tom Turner has decided not to run for reelection. And then we have three candidates who would like to take that spot on the Board of Selectmen. Jesse Billings, a former selectman and dairy farmer in Rutland Town is with us. Don Chaffee, a former state legislative representative. And Harold Billings, Jesse's brother, another dairy farmer and a former state representative. We also have with us tonight, three representatives from the media. And they are Bruce Edwards from WSYB, Steve Rosenfeld from the Rutland Herald, and Ed Pickett from WHWB. We'll start tonight's program with a brief opening statement by each candidate. And Harold Billings will be our first speaker. Harold.
Hi. I believe the main issue in this campaign is problem-solving style. My negotiating methods and social skills have served me well in the past at bringing together diverse but well-intentioned people so that solutions we could all live with were found and progress was made peacefully and respectfully. This positive attitude and problem-solving ability is what I would like to bring to our Board of Selectmen should I be elected. I believe the sign of my campaign is a smiley symbol that brings to everybody the same reaction of hope and a good tomorrow. I hope that I will be a positive force at bringing industrial and commercial jobs to our areas so that our children and grandchildren won't be having to leave here in order to have gainfully employment. This, I believe, will be more likely if it becomes true if I can improve the image that we have earned around here of public fighting. One must not forget that when it's named Rutland, it's Rutland Town, or Rutland City, or Rutland School Board, or whatever. We do have to improve that. Who can blame industrial and commercial leaders for being reluctant to come here and get in between the city and town in order to get water and other services? Just over the Connecticut, or just over by the Connecticut River, there's a man named Al Moulton, who I consider one of the best promoters in this state. He is shaking hands in a friendly way with industrial and commercial people instead of them coming here and getting slapped around in disgruntled communities. Now, I ask you, if you were an industrial leader, where would you stop to look at a place to put your factory? Should your elected officials be continually... Should your elected leadership be concentrating on which community gets the small scraps of taxes from a project of industrial-commercial stature? Or should we be looking at things like payrolls, rollover effects of money going through our economy, and area job security because of diverse types of businesses? In many ways, the future for us and our grandchildren in this area depends on the quality of leadership that we elect in our towns this week. As your legislator in Mount Hillia for eight years, I practiced quiet diplomacy, respectful negotiating, and friendly persuasion. I believe it worked for the betterment of all concerned. I helped draft all three phases of the Seal of Quality Program with others. That pushed the superior products in our state by enhancing their good qualities. I, with two others, Norm Wright and Henry Kars, developed a land use taxation type of scheme that we are developing in this town and voting for next week. This plan is a positive way of helping people not develop open land because of the heavy burden of property taxes. Yes, I believe the Rutland area as well as Rutland Town is truly blessed with its many good geographic areas and hidden wealth of citizen talent. We are at a crossroads, not only of geographics, but of time in history as we are now competing on an international market for companies. And if we are going to sell our area, we're going to have to adjust our image upward. The amount of citizen talent around us is overwhelming, but we are unable to get them more involved because of the usual image of politicians and non-businesslike functioning of our boards and commissions of government. If I am successful in improving my town's image, then even better qualified individuals than myself will step forward. Such is democracy and my dream. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Harold. Don Chaffee, please take the podium.
Good evening. I'd first of all like to thank the listeners to this program for inviting us, and me particularly, into your homes. I'd like to thank Dick Stillson and Randy Wright for setting this program up. And its sponsor, I understand we do have a sponsor, Steve Hochberg, for his civic spirit. I guess I would start without any prepared notes and try to speak to you of 17 years of service. I'd try to speak to you this evening of why I became involved in town government more than 17 years ago. And try to give you a feeling of my continued commitment to the town. Seventeen years ago, when coming to the community of Rutland Town, I detected a great community, a wonderful community to live in, but a community that had some needs. It was also apparent to me that many of the citizens in the town wished to develop the recreation in their town and to see it grow into progressive and a wholesome community. Out of that sincere desire to assist that community, I became involved in a long and arduous struggle to build recreational areas. And I certainly wasn't alone. I can remember the time that Fred Gallopo, the longtime selectman of the town, came to me and said, "Don, you're always complaining about recreation and we need more. Would you be willing to serve on a committee which will study recreational needs and report back to the town?" And I said, "Fred, you've given me the challenge, and I thank you for that." Seven long years later, actually four years later, under the direction of that Recreation Commission, the Northwood Pool Project was completed, the Northwood Park, from a piece of raw land into one of the finest recreational areas in the state of Vermont, in my opinion. That didn't happen without some confrontation. It certainly didn't happen without a lot of hard work. And it certainly didn't happen without the commitment of a great number of people, especially the citizenry of the town, who undertook this project in terms of multiple thousands of dollars of the town's money, but at 15% rate, a pretty good buy for the town. When I look back to that project and those years on the Recreation Commission and the building that took place in the town, and I look back to my continuous 17 years of service in numerous positions in town government, I see people. I see people who have always supported that kind of progressive government and fighting for a strong independent community that can cooperate, but whose goal, as any community's goal should be, is to develop their community in a progressive way as they see fit. When I look back at those people who always supported me, who other candidates have called my committee, I don't see a committee, I never have seen a committee. I've seen good and decent and honest people who wanted somebody to fight for something that maybe they didn't have the time to fight for. They certainly had the desire, and they had a sincere wish to see things move forward. And the thing that disturbs me most about this political action committee advocacy in the town of Rutland is not that people back people, because that's their personal right. It's that those people who supported me, supported me for what I believed in and what I was willing to fight for, sometimes very hard. And when I see committees taking positions against that kind of leadership, I don't see them taking positions against me. I see them taking positions against all those people who for all those years fought for those good things that I believed in. And that disturbs me. As I look now to the selectmen's race, and we will deal with the issues upon questioning, I have been forthright in honest in addressing the issues. I have been diligent in researching the facts. And I have been maybe a little more arduous than I should have been in persecuting the point. For that, I suppose I'd have to apologize. But I would never apologize for the good and sound development, the cooperative working relationships that have existed. And I would have to take strong disagreement to the fact that we are in turmoil, for I do not believe that we are in turmoil. I have seen the board operating successfully and independently, I might add, so that each person can give their opinion, their valued consideration, and the board can come to agreement by majority decision, which is the democratic process. To believe that a board, any board, should speak with one cloned voice is against every principle that I believe in in democracy. We need interchange in ideas. We need interchange in debate. And then we need to rally around a majority position. This I have seen happening continuously in the town of Rutland for the last two years under the present leadership. I would ask the citizens to listen very carefully to the answers to the question. And instead of dealing with what the media says is a style argument, deal with the issues and the answers to the issues that are presented. And I thank you.
Thank you, Don. Jesse?
Thank you very much for allowing me to come into your homes tonight. I don't think I have as much to say as the other two very qualified gentlemen. But I would like to say that I have in the past been very interested in our town government. I have served as, on the school board for two years. Worked very hard at that. Worked very hard at serving my town for three years as a selectman. I have... I haven't been doing quite as much lately as I would like to in the political arena. That changed a while back, and I won't go into it. But I'm in this race to stay. And I think when you hear the answers to my questions, you will realize that I have a good grasp of the situation. I, for one, do not feel that there is a big problem in Rutland Town that can't be handled adequately by our five selectmen, of which I hope to be one. I see no real big problem. I see a bigger problem in the problem between the town and the city. And most of Rutland Town's problems are not caused by Rutland Town. They're caused by the problems of the city. That we'll get into a little later. And I thank you, and I'll try to answer your questions.
Thank you, Jesse. We'll take a short break, and we'll come back and open up the discussion to the panelists. Your first panelist, Ed Pickett from WHWB.
Thank you very much. I'd like to join in everybody who's congratulating the fact that we have this kind of political forum on local television. It's a real asset. I'd also like very much to congratulate the three candidates in coming here and facing the heat, both literally and figuratively. I'm going to direct my question to Harold Billings, mainly because he was the first one to come up, so I'll give you the first question. You spoke about style, whereas Mr. Chaffee spoke about his feelings on the issues. And Jesse Billings suggested that most of the problems come in the town because of the city. Do you feel that this election is really a matter of personalities, far more than any real issues?
Yes. I guess style is called personality in the political arena. There's several ways of addressing problems as a politician. One is a quiet type of way, where you work behind the scenes, so to speak. You find the several solutions to a problem, and then maybe the best possible solution. You get five or six people to sit around and brainstorm in order to come up with something everybody can live with. I have seen several instances the last couple of years where the politicians get so confused because of the heat of the argument that they go to the press and call people names or get confrontational things going. And then it's very difficult to heal those wounds. I guess that's what I call style of solving problems. I don't believe in that, because every time you have to heal a wound before you get back to the issue, it takes years.
Well, Mr. Billings, you're talking in generalities now. And you're asking the voters to vote specifically. Who are you talking about?
Oh, Donald. When Donald and Mr. Turner attacked the governor at the airport because she misunderstood or disagreed with something that was happening in the town of Rutland, that was done in public. It was done to embarrass the governor. And she's not going to forget that. And she's one of the people that can either heal or hurt us here. That's a good example, I'd say.
You gonna have an answer?
Yes, Don, briefly, please.
I doubt very seriously whether an answer to those kind of innuendos could be given in one minute. But first of all, Mr. Billings is not in control of his facts, which he very often is not. That action taken at the airport was done in anticipation of giving that letter to the Secretary of Transportation, Susan Crampton, who it was under the direct assumption would be at that major opening of a major transportation facility in central Vermont, the biggest one in 15 years that I can remember. And the urgency of the situation on the part of all concerns, including city people, was that that memorandum issued was not done to embarrass the governor. And as a matter of pure fact, the one person who could have saved that situation from happening was Mr. Billings' wife, Mary Ashcroft, who was the liaison for transportation issues on this particular, in the administration. And had no communication whatsoever with any of us in the region, including myself, as to whether the secretary would be there. And as a matter of fact, had no communication with any member of the Rutland Town Bypass Study Committee in over two years of discussions on this issue, even though it was her specific function as the governor's liaison to bridge the gap between the Secretary of Transportation and any legislative member.
Mr. Chaffee, you're answering a specific charge that you made about a specific incident.
That's correct.
But it went far beyond that. What Mr. Billings was talking about was a matter of style, a confrontational style.
Well, it's been Mr. Billings' ploy in this particular campaign to tell you, the media, as he has many times, that this is only a campaign of style. I think maybe people ought to take a good close look at results from style and not just look at the style. If he's correct, and his style is correct and appropriate for the town, then he should be able to show the accomplishments that he achieved with that style for the town of Rutland specifically and for the state in general during his eight years in the legislature. On the other hand, it would take me far too long, and I don't wish to go into that unless it's on another specific question, but on initiatives throughout the state and specifically for Rutland Town, that element of style which he so quickly upgrades has produced more achievements for the town of Rutland and the state in general in terms of major legislation, which could not be accomplished without compromise, without consideration, and without respect from the many, many legislators with whom I've co-sponsored legislation and that I've introduced as major proponents.
Thank you, Don. Jesse, would you like to add anything to that?
Yes, I would. I hear Harold sitting here telling you about his style and so on. But I'm the one that read the paper a while back. And I read about a fellow that came out against a man, Tom Turner, to be specific. And the man wasn't even running for office. And it was a very confrontational type of article, as far as I was concerned. That's one thing that got me into this foray.
So what are you saying, Mr. Billings? You're saying that your style is better than the other two candidates?
I'm not so sure about that. But I'm sure that I wouldn't be shooting from the hip at a fellow that wasn't even running for office. I think I could contain myself until I knew who I was running against.
Thank you, Jesse. Let's go to Steve Rosenfeld from Rutland Herald.
Don, in conversations with me, you've intimated that your recent dismissal from as a teacher at the Rutland Town Public Schools was politically motivated. What politics, if any, are you referring to?
Well, I don't know, as I did intimate to you that it was politically motivated. I told you that it was very difficult under the conditions that exist with the school board not having given any reasons for their particular dismissal, and that I wouldn't comment on that until after the reasons were given. As a matter of fact, in a letter to me, no reasons were given. And I will not comment on that. And I don't think that I should dignify any statements about that particular thing when it deals with a professional, it deals with children, in this kind of a forum. I don't think it serves the town well, and I certainly don't think it serves the children well.
Well, it's my understanding that you felt the members of the school board are the same people who supported Mayor Thomas's campaign and now support Harold Billings.
Well, I'll state the facts in answer to that question by saying that it seems quite coincidental to me that all five members of the school board openly and publicly, as members of the committee, supported my opponent in the November election. It's also quite surprising to me that all of a sudden, none of the five school board members' names appear on the present Citizens Committee, which has dwindled from 75 down to 23, as I count. Which means that if it's gaining so much strength, it's really surprising to me that people are falling off the list as opposed to going onto it. I don't think it's very difficult to see, based on the statements that are being made and the personalities that are making them and the people involved, what's happening in the town. But I can't draw any concrete conclusions because no reasons have been given. It'll be left to the audience to draw their own conclusion.
What do you see is happening in the town?
Well, we're gonna go past three minutes.
Go ahead, Don.
Basically, what's happening in the town, and it's an outcropping of what happened in the '70s, is you have obviously a political confrontation and a philosophical disagreement between various factions in the town. It's very obvious when the two members of the Board of Selectmen, who presently are disavowing any committee action, are members of the Citizens Committee, which is backing Harold Billings' candidacy. It's also obvious to me that when two members of the Board of Selectmen openly and publicly do this, and the other two or three don't, that it's those two members that wish to seek the change and are openly backing Harold's candidacy. That, to me, and they're backed by the Citizens Committee, the same Citizens Committee that had as its basic goal, and they said so more than one time, to dump Don Chaffee. It wasn't that they wanted something better for the town. They didn't want me. They never indicated what this person was going to accomplish. And they haven't indicated, nor has Harold indicated in his comments tonight, what specifically he is going to accomplish. These committees, if they're backing people for what they stand for, are fine. These committees, when they go from one candidate to another candidate, and then another and another, are obviously not backing candidates per se. They're backing total control with their philosophy of every facet of government. The fact that these members are intertwined between the school board and the Citizens Committee, who will let candidates, indicates to me that it's control of school system, it's control of Town Board of Selectmen, auditors, or any other facet of government. And that's what I see happen.
Thank you, Don. Jesse, would you like to comment anything on that?
Just a short comment that we speak about the committee here. And I've heard various ideas about how long this committee has been in existence. But I do know one thing, that back about six years ago, when Bill Thomas ran against me, I'm not sure it was a full-fledged committee at that time, but they sure as hell raised a lot of money to defeat me.
Thank you, Jesse. And Harold, I think you look like you want to add something to that.
I didn't know anything about any committee until last June or July. I got involved because I wanted to calm down the type of leadership I saw leading the area. I had nothing to do with Donald's being fired. That's between he and his employer. I don't know. I think we ought to calm things down around here.
Thank you. Bruce Edwards from WSYB.
I was debating whether to continue with this line of question or go on to another question. But I do want to ask Don one thing about this issue, this style of leadership. Looking back on your career as a state representative, do you have any regrets about your style, what people would perceive as a confrontational, sometimes abrasive approach? The same approach that some people in town obviously think Tom Turner has as well. I'm thinking of his stance concerning the Regional Commission. He led the charge to have the town withdraw from the Regional Commission. There was a lot of controversy about that. When you were state representative, your anti-Killington campaign, the infamous, some people would call infamous bumper sticker campaign against Killington, where the affluent meet the effluent. Some in the town would think that is an embarrassment to the town and counterproductive. How do you respond to that? Do you have any regrets about some of the things you've said and done over the years? Numerous letters to the Rutland Herald.
In answer to your specific question, no, I don't have any regrets generally over the way I conducted myself as a state representative. I did it with a tremendous amount of pride, not only in my townspeople, but in the major issues that I was confronting. Yes, in retrospect, one would always look back and say, "I might have done this differently. I might have done this here." It's unfortunate, in state government, federal government, or any form of government, that the major criticisms that people have are that politicians are too wimpy and laid back, and that they never seem to get anything accomplished. And they go up to Mount Hillia for four months on a vacation. And in assessing that particular kind of a judgment, which is that of a lot of people, maybe you try to use your talents and you try to develop a style and a strategy that's very advocacy-oriented. And maybe in contrast to the rest of the legislature, that really looks iconoclastic. And on balance, I'd have to say yes, that it does put you in the forefront. But the fact of the matter is, Rutland Town is looked at right now, and has been looked at in the legislature, as a very active town, a very responsible town. And it's recognized the way it was never recognized before. And it isn't with disdain. It's with respect. Yes, I had people in the legislature who said, "Gosh, I wish you would have not said as much about that," and so on and so forth. But when you've been chomping at the bit for 15 or 20 years to have your chance to try to represent a town and looking at a lot of things that are wrong that you'd like to make right, you get out there and try to do it. Yes, there's something to be learned from that. And if there's anything a teacher could say and would have to say to his students or to anybody else, is that if you can't be a studier of your own mistakes and thereby make yourself better from them, then you have no business trying to teach others to do that.
Was there anything productive that came out of your attack on the Killington skier?
Well, obviously. And I wouldn't sit here and say that I'm the only crusader or the only scapegoat. But it's very unfortunate that the state of the situation at the time was that the major developers were pretty much having their way in this state. And that particular issue, although I ended up kind of getting consumed in it, was the type of media exposure that made people in this state aware of the problem. Not the problem that I brought up, but in a fairly humorous way. That thing would have been over in two days if Killington had not taken such umbrage at the situation. And it was their umbrage at the situation that made people in the state aware that there may be a problem. There is no question in my mind, but what... The work that I did on that, in my particular way, helped the legislature in terms of focusing on the issue of water quality, focusing on the issue of development in the state, and focusing the debate, which took place in a very calm and rational manner to produce a law in the state which essentially said, "We support development, but we are not going to let it totally control our state." And that, to me, is far more important. If I sacrificed in doing that to bring that about, I'm proud that that happened.
You don't think you went too far with the bumper sticker campaign?
I believe that the resolution of the issue in the water quality debate and the bill that was passed was well worth the efforts that I put into it.
Thank you, Don. Harold, would you like to add anything to that?
Yes. I think Donald and I have found something we agree upon. It's definitely for sure that a lot of, both of our colleagues in State House know where Rutland Town is. However, to give you a good example, when I've been going up there the last few years, they said, "Harold, you never looked so good as you do now that you're out of the legislature and somebody else is replacing you." Because, in several ways, they were looking at a program that Donald was involved in called Rutland 2020 several years ago. And he was the chairman of a committee that wrote out a report saying that we should increase tourism here. And I thought that was a heck of a good idea. And then I got down to the bottom and it said, "Not only should we increase tourism by state aid and things like that, but we should increase it by bumper stickers." And my colleagues in the house kept asking me if that was the first example. That's all.
Thank you. Thank you. Jesse, do you have anything to add to that? Okay, at this point, we'll take a short break, and we'll be right back. Welcome back. We'll resume the questioning with Ed Pickett.
Thank you very much. I'd like to direct a question to Jesse Billings. I'm intrigued by brothers running, as I think most people are. Who asked you to run for selectman? How did it come about that you decided to run? And are you, in fact, in this race in order just to stop your brother from winning?
Well, let me put it to you this way. I was at selectman about six years ago. And it seemed real nice after I wasn't selectman for a while. And my wife kept telling me how wonderful it was that I wasn't coming home late at night after meetings, rumbling and talking to myself for quite some time. And for a few years, every time I'd get interested and I'd read a piece in the Herald, she'd shake her head, "No." And she knew I was, I'd gotten to the point where I was interested in getting back into it again. And the day I read the article concerning Harold and Tom Turner, I read the article and I looked it over to my wife, and she was going like this. And I said, "Here we go. I'm going to do it before she changes her mind."
Well, Harold Billings seems to indicate that he's running against Don Chaffee. Are you running against Harold?
I'm just running for the job. I've done the job before. I know I can handle it. I know I can do a good job.
But aren't you just gonna split the vote with your brother?
What do you mean, "split the vote"?
Well, if there's a couple of guys named Billings on there, doesn't that mean that people have to choose between the two of you?
I don't think, I'm Jess, okay? He's Harold. We are brothers. We're in the same type of business, but that's where the similarity ends.
I'd like to hear Harold Billings's comments on that.
There was two seats open on the Board of Select People. I was the very first to declare that I was running for the Board of Select People, for a good reason, I thought. And then Mr. Turner, in his wisdom, decided to get out. I'm running for the position. Whether Jess chooses to run for selectman or run against me is entirely of course up to him.
Well, but you haven't answered my question. I asked whether you felt that he was in the race to stop you from winning.
I think a rational person would conclude that, and I have also.
Don, do you have any thoughts on that? Is it gonna make it easier for you to win election because there are two fellows named Billings running?
I don't ever consider that I'm in a race to beat anybody. I'm in the race to win the election and to serve the people of the town of Rutland. I had seven hundred and eighty-five good citizens of the town of Rutland support in the November election. And I honestly believe that those people supported me for what I am, not for the fact that I wanted to beat somebody. I wanted to continue to serve the town, and I still maintain that position. And I am running for the job of selectman of the town of Rutland. I would never, nor have I ever, ran with a specific purpose in mind of beating somebody, but rather to serve the town. And also, I'm running to be one of a member of five Board of Selectmen. And I think that divergent ideas and exchange of ideas are important to any board, certainly a board of five. I can't see myself aligning with any particular group on the board, but aligning with good ideas for the progressive progress of the town. And I've watched the board for, I've watched the board for two years. I've attended probably seventy-five percent of the selectmen's meetings when I was in the House of Representatives, and mostly doing a lot of healthy listening. I haven't seen any factionalism.
Well, Don, that really, nobody's questioning that. But that really wasn't the question that I asked you. I asked whether the fact that there are two Billings running is an accident, or is it something that is meant to help you win reelection?
If it's meant to help me win an election, it isn't in my mind, and I certainly had nothing to do with it. If the two brothers have philosophical differences, that's up to the people to make decisions on. But I think I am enough different than both of them that I should win the race.
Thank you, Don. Steve from the Rutland Herald.
Let's talk issues. Could each candidate say what they feel are the most important issues facing Rutland Town and what they would deal with as priorities if they were elected to the board?
Harold, I'll start with you.
There are several things that are important. One is, we do have a traffic congestion problem in the greater Rutland area. One way or another, some group has to solve that. We have a situation coming up of water supply to commercial industrial buildings that wish to come here. That has to be negotiated fairly soon. And third, and I think most importantly, I think the city and the town, and the town within itself, should start talking about dealing without the press being available and dealing in a style that calms things down so that the name Rutland doesn't get dragged through the paper too many times, so that prospective industrial and commercial leaders read it in a bad attitude. Those three things could help us come a long way in this area.
Don?
Well, again, Harold begs the question. The biggest issue in the town of Rutland is whatever issue happens to be at hand at the time. And that could be transportation, or it could be commercial development, it could be industrial development. It certainly could be a water contract with the city, or it could be any other of any number of matters, development within the town. But the real issue is, who is going to make the decision for the town of Rutland in those very instances? Is it going to be a Board of Selectmen basically comprised of three individuals, which is what this thing is all about, controlled by three? The statements that were made in the paper by the Citizens Committee in the most recent article didn't deal with me. They dealt with a harsh criticism of a Board of Selectmen comprised of three members who never responded to that article, by two members who are members of the committee backing a third candidate. I think that this is a slam against all of the work of Tom Turner. And in addition, it's a slam to the work of Rod Galoppo, whose family has served this town for as long as I can remember, back when I was living in the city. And certainly a slam at Clifford Young. Because the only way I can interpret those comments about divisiveness on the board are that the two members who are backing Harold can't seem to have their way in enough issues, and believe that the other three are conducting themselves unscrupulously. And I have not seen that, nor do I believe it's happening. As a matter of fact, no, I don't want to get into that. But I think there's ample proof of board members coming to the meetings with motions already prepared on issues that are on the agenda to indicate that it may be the other side that is guilty of this and calling the kettle black. The issue is, who is going to make the decision? Is it going to be a Board of Three, or is it going to be interchange of ideas with five board members who can contribute varying ideas? And also, as Harold just mentioned, this bit about solving the problems in the back room with a handshake, a smile, and a kiss, and keeping the press out of it, are against every tradition and every vein of democracy that I have ever known since I was knee-high to a grasshopper. My view is that you let the people know through the press of the issues, the disagreements, and the possible resolutions to them. And you do it in a respectful way. But you do the people no service at all if you don't let them decide based on knowledge of the issues, but rather your closed back-room solution to the problems. I don't view democracy that, in that way.
Thank you, Don. Jesse?
Yes, I would like to speak on this, because I see it as a problem. I don't see as the town of Rutland has a great problem with what their selectmen have done. I do see a problem in the near future as to who gets on the board. Most people, I don't think, realize that the board is somewhat divided. There are two that kind of think one way and two that kind of think the other. And as it happens, if you happen to be on the minority, I guess it can be quite frustrating. I have always been one that leaned towards fighting like the dickens for our Rutland town. And I think we've got to. I know when I was selectman, I fought like the dickens for what we believed in was best for us. And most of the fights we got into were caused by Rutland City. Rutland City has always wanted something from the town. Namely, most of it has to do with taxes. They want our tax base. And if we enter into a contract with the city, they've always got to have about a hundred and twenty-five percent of it their way. That might be a water contract, might be a sewer contract. It used to be a contract for fire protection. When we had to use the city dump, we were behind the eight ball all the time. One of the greatest things that the city ever did to us was to throw us out of their landfill. And it got us into a very beautiful condition. And by the way, I am so glad that Rutland Town does have their landfill. I certainly don't want any part of Vicon.
Thank you, Jesse. Bruce Edwards.
Concerning city-town relations, how would each of you go about improving relations in the city? We've had disagreements recently over the Adelle Stanley Water Bill. We're obviously having disagreements over the Rutland Mall expansion. And the Commons may or may not be down the road as a point of contention between the city and town. How would each of you deal with city-town relations? How do you serve the town and at the same time get along with the city? And look, and I guess what I'm saying is, take a regional approach, if that's possible, for the best interests of the city, the town, and the surrounding areas. Jesse, would you want to start?
Yes, I would like to speak on that. I think that, you know, it seems like the town is always behind the eight ball. There's somebody in the city that wants something of us, or doesn't seem to want us to carry the ball and go with it. Now, you know, it seems to me like, here we are, we're right next to Killington, and we're right next to Pico. There are people going by our doors. I think we ought to be inviting them in. I really do. If there are people out there that want to put a mall in Rutland Town or in the area, I think we ought to open our arms and pull them in. I think that is what we need. And I don't know how the town and city are going to resolve it. But if you stick your head in the sand, like the city has, and say, "If you've got more marbles than I've got, I'm gonna pick mine up and go home," it isn't going to work. Now, Rutland Town, as far as I can see, has been very progressive. Anybody that wants to come into Rutland Town within the industry, they pretty well know where they stand. Except for the fact, if we have to go to the city and beg for water or sewer. Now, we do have water contracts and we have sewer contracts. And even to this, right to this very day, the city is holding us up. And there's no good logical reason for this. We need, you know, some community spirit. I mean, town and city, we need to work together. Now, another thing, what comes up is the bypass around Rutland. You know, if I was a businessman, and I am, and I do sell my share in businesses where people go by the door. And my gosh, when people don't go by your door anymore, you're in trouble. And if Rutland City insists that the bypass go around it, they are going to be in deep trouble. Everybody knows it's coming. Now, I think what we should really do is all work together. No matter what it takes, is to work together and take a positive attitude. Did you know, if I was an industrialist coming into this area, one thing I would want to know is, you know, how far have I got to go to shop? It's ridiculous that people in Rutland are going, you know, as far away as fifty or sixty miles to shop. And we should be taking advantage of the people that are coming through here, day after day, the tourists that are coming through here. We should be taking advantage of that. Take their money. They want to give it to us. That's what I've got to say.
Don't you have to, I don't want to pursue this too long. Don't you have to look at the other guy's point of view, the city's point of view, on what development, for instance, in the town could do to the city's tax base, looking particularly at the downtown merchants?
Who says there's a connection?
I mean, we're talking about getting along here. That means a give and take, doesn't it?
Well, certainly, we don't, I don't see as Rutland Town has to give the city its tax base to make the whole area better. Now, if the city's idea of increasing its tax base at all odds is like bringing a plant like Vicon in here and polluting our valley, I don't understand that. If the city could find a place for Vicon, why can't they find a place for industries and so on? The city's always said, "Well, the town has got the place for industries. We haven't." Why do we have Vicon? Why do we have the specter of outside, of trash coming in from out of state and being burned in our beautiful valley? You know, someday, somebody's gonna hold up a little sign. And it's gonna say, "The Valley of the Purple Snow," or something like that. You know, I really don't like it. We are, how is any industry going to come into this area if we're already so darn polluted that we can't have anymore? I wonder if anybody in the city thought of that.
Thank you, Jesse. Don, would you like to respond to that question?
Yeah, I won't be as long as Jess. It'll be the first time. City-town relations are something that's much has been made of. And I think that there are some scare texts being used, but they're certainly being used by the committee and not by either one of the other two candidates. In fact, city-town relations are probably at their all-time high. If Harold had been at even one of the bypass meetings where city fathers and planning commission members and citizen representatives sat down with the town representatives and planning commission members and chairman of the Board of Selectmen, they would have seen that although we certainly had disagreements and we certainly had a divergence of ideas to throw into the pot, that those discussions were conducted amicably, they were conducted respectfully, very professionally, and the outcome of the meeting is the proof of the pudding. The outcome of the meeting was that the city members and the town members agreed unanimously. Unanimously. There never has been more agreement on an issue between the city and the town in all the years that I've lived here.
That was with the bypass to the engine.
No, no, that was not. The unanimous agreement. Well, that's not a laughing matter. The agreement was that the power line proposal was not the proper proposal for either the city or the town, and that we both would work towards a solution which would serve the region's needs without being the incorrect solution as perceived by both the city and the town. Now, I think that I'd have to give my city counterparts on that committee certainly as much credit as my fellow town members on there. But it wasn't an issue where the people went into some closed room, shook hands, and come out with some signed, sealed, and delivered agreement that they weren't going to tell the people about. That was open public knowledge. Also, I'd like to point out in this issue that, in a certain sense, it must be the media's fault or someone else's fault other than the town of Rutland, that it's never been mentioned, certainly in any degree of respect and regard, that the town of Rutland was the only town in this region that participated with the city of Rutland in the bonding for its sewage treatment plant, to the tune of a million three hundred thousand dollars. That we are an equal partner, and that the town, through its town fathers and its petition to the people, bonded its people by vote, and the people supported that, to put a hundred and twenty-some-odd thousand dollars of town money in to get a million three more federal money. That conveniently neglects to be mentioned, and those are cooperative agreements. But to sum up, city-town relations don't involve everybody agreeing. That is never going to happen. It will involve compromises. At the point at which the compromise does not serve the interests of the townspeople in the town of Rutland in terms of their tax base and their ability to live the way they wish to live in the town, that's the point at which you just have to, you just have to say, "Well, thank you. We've had some good discussions, but we can only give this much before our people are not served anymore." That's done with respect. And I think it's, the attitude is changing in the city as much as it's changing in the town. And I don't detect animosity from the city people. And I think that they have leadership on the forefront in the city of Rutland which is going to allow this to occur. And I've been privileged to work with that leadership in very cooperative agreements and relationships for over twelve years.
Thank you, Don. Harold, would you like to follow up on that?
Can I give a short answer?
Sure can.
I hate to dust off an old thing, but several years ago, in this area, the city and town fathers were taken up to Bolton. And they sat down over a weekend to try to iron out some of their problems out of the public for views, so to speak. And they came back, and I hope to have, they had some progress. I don't see anything wrong at all in that happening again. Except, I think this time, we ought to take the press with us and let all three of us decide how we're gonna pull this Rutland area together. And as far as this bypass, I mean, this bypass conclusion thing, I understand that Menden and Rutland Town and Rutland City sat down and attempted to come out with a conclusion as to what best to do about our traffic problem. The only conclusion that I have found so far is that Rutland City and Rutland Town agreed that something would not happen in Rutland Town. There was no conclusion as to what to do about the traffic. There was no conclusion as to what to do about the traffic problem. And that, I understand, was the charge.
Thank you, Harold.
That's not, in fact, correct.
We'll have closing arguments in a couple minutes. We're going to take a short break, and when we come back, each candidate will have a brief closing statement. Thank you. Okay, we're back, and we're going to wrap things up with a closing statement first from Jesse Billings.
One thing I'd like to say, if I'm elected selectman, it will be because I really want a job, I know I can do it, there are a number of people in the town that know I can do it. I will work very hard, and you'll never have to worry that Jess Billings would sell Rutland Town, no. Thank you.
Thank you, Jesse. Don?
Randy, I'm going to use my closing comments, since I know the press has about 20 more questions apiece, to mention again that this is supposed to be a campaign of issues, and there have been really few issues brought up. I'd like to take my closing remarks to comment very briefly on one major and seemingly the only proposal of solidity that Mr. Billings, Mr. Harold Billings has offered in his campaign, which is quarterly payment of taxes in the town of Rutland. This issue was soundly defeated two years ago by the voters of the town, as was, I might add, the issue of selling the Cheney Hill School, which has been brought up again by the school board. This is an ill-thought-out proposal by Mr. Billings in a number of regards. First of all, the taxes in the town of Rutland are some of the lowest in the region. Second of all, the delinquent taxpayers in the town of Rutland, and I've had two conversations with the tax collector of 11 years on this, are some of the lowest, if not the lowest, in the state of Vermont. Third of all, the loss of investment income from paying taxes quarterly as opposed to annually could amount to some $60,000 a year, which would necessitate a seven-cent increase in the tax rate alone, not to mention the problems of collecting the tax. And lastly, by the tax collector's own admissions and statements to me, this is Mr. Lloyd, he has not had a problem with elderly people not paying the taxes. Quite to the contrary, he said many of the people who haven't paid the taxes have a lot more money than all three of us put together. But in fact, eight, two people, out of all the years that he's been collecting taxes, have indicated a problem because of elderly. I think our elderly people support us well, and do pay their taxes on time. I think it's a poorly drawn proposal, and I think it's a poor excuse, and will result, in fact, in higher taxes for the town of Rutland. I did some checking when I was in Montpelier last week, and found that of all cities and towns that have quarterly or payment methods of paying taxes, the taxes in those, in 75, well over 75% of those towns, is significantly higher than those towns that do not. I think this is the vacuum cleaner salesman argument, where you can pay by the week, or by the month, or by the quarter in this case, and it will naturally, it will allow the taxes to rise much more significantly for somebody's purposes. And I don't think this is the way to go. I think bringing solid tax base in, working to keep that tax base, and to keep the town of Rutland a community in which people can afford to live and work and play is a goal. And I think certainly a lot more discussion ought to be given to that particular proposal by a whole board that has some ability to research these issues, as I've done, before making a decision which gets the town down a poor road. I'd like to thank you for hosting this program, and I'd certainly like to thank the people for listening, and I would certainly appreciate your support to continue working for the town of Rutland, which I've been privileged to serve for 17 years, and certainly wish to continue.
Thank you, Don. Harold, would you like to wrap things up for us?
Probably Donald has not been shaking the same number of hands that I have lately. Quarterly taxes to a good many seems to be a darn good idea. I think we can work out the things we call problems. And you can take any figures you want and make them do anything you want. However, it's still a very good idea, and I think we should investigate it. Besides, those are the people who are paying the taxes. On the other front, I think it's very healthy in any democracy, when in this particular case, you've got three individuals who care so deeply for the area. I know in Jess's, in my case, our ancestors came here in 1813, and our ancestors have been involved almost all the time since. So our interest is coming forth today. But thank you for being patient with us. We're darn nervous, at least you're in a nice, cool place at home.
Thank you, Harold. I guess that's going to wrap it up from the Cozy Studios at Channel 15. I'd like to say that this particular forum will be re-cablecast on Thursday at 7:00, following the Mayor of Debate cablecast. I'd like to urge everyone again to get out and vote on Town Meeting Day. I'd like to thank our three candidates, Jesse Billings, Don Chaffee, Harold Billings. And I'd like to thank our three members of the media, Bruce Edwards from WSYB, Steve Rosenfeld from the Rutland Herald, and Ed Pickett from WHWB. So that's going to do it tonight for us from Channel 15. Good night.